Recording in progress.
Good evening. Welcome to the Lewisville City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Mayor Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Most.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Thank you. Would you all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have public comments on items not on the agenda and items that are on the consent agenda. This is a chance to anyone to speak to any item not on the agenda or the consent agenda with one exception. I want to let you know that we're, we, council will be pulling item 4E off the consent agenda and we'll be addressing that in a regular meeting. So there'll be comments during that period of time. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name and if you are a Lewisville resident. Anybody to speak on any items not on the consent agenda or any other topic?
Going once, going twice.
I see no one on Zoom as well. So we will move on. Thank you very much. So are there any changes to consent agenda? I will answer that question. We are going to pull item 4E and that will be the first item that we will address under regular business. Is there a motion to approve the amended consent agenda? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Any council members have any items? Councilor Most.
Yeah, I believe that it is Women's History Month this month. And I just wanted to say that I think it's important that we recognize Women's History Month, the role that women have played in this community, in the state, in this country, in advancing our democracy. I think women are currently under attack in places in this country right now, which is really scary to me. The latest of which, I understand now, is they're trying to ban gender studies in the state of Florida. And as much as we, I think, have a really wonderful community and a wonderful state, and there's a lot of really progressive things going on, we have to remember that we live in a broader country and a broader world. And I think it's really important that we all recognize the contribution of women on this council, in our city government, in our community, and that all the men recognize their mothers, their wives, their girlfriends, their sisters, their family members who are women, and just recognize that we live together and that we prosper together when we're all engaged. So.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add one more thing to Councilor Most's comments, and that is that the Lewisville History Museum has just put out their monthly newsletter, and it includes very interesting stories about some of the women that got the city going and progressed it on through. I'd also like to mention that one very influential lady from the city, Virginia Curancy, just passed away. And she did remarkable things very recently to promote the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilors, for your comments. Next, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to regular business. So we moved consent item 4E, award contract for the 2023 concrete replacement project. Does staff want to make any comments or?
I mean, before you is a contract for concrete work for the paving program for 2023 and several ad alternates. We're happy to speak to any questions that come up tonight on any of those topics.
Thank you. The next portion of this will be public comment, and then we will move on to council comments, discussion, and action on this. So moving on to public comments, first person we have is David Blankenship.
Well, my name is David Blankenship, and I live at 867 Tree Street in Lewisville. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of council tonight. And I'm, first of all, very pleasantly surprised that this item 4E did get moved off of the consent agenda to the main agenda. So appreciative of that. And what brings me here tonight is, is obviously the project on Coal Creek Trail where there is a proposal to convert about a half mile from gravel to concrete. And although this is not a concrete replacement project, it did seem to make it in as an ad alternate item. It might not initially have been obvious to council what it was at the time. So I am the chair of the Open Space Advisory Board, but tonight I speak to you as a member of the public. I'm also an avid runner and cyclist, and I'm on the trails in and around Lewisville almost every day. The proposal to change the surface of Coal Creek Trail from a soft to a hard surface has apparently been in the works in council and city circles for several years, but the 2019 transportation master plan is silent on the proposal, although it did address some neighboring and adjacent trails. It was on the list of the capital improvement projects recommended for deletion after the council's budget retreat in July of 2022 as well. In addition, OSAB, the primary board responsible for making trail-related recommendations, was not formally consulted about the proposal. And when they found out about it in the fall of 2022, sent a memo expressing unanimous opposition to the project. And I do see that in your addendum for tonight that was included again. What I have found that since this project was placed on the agenda is that there's been a pleasantly broad coalition of people in the community, including eco-minded people, as well as those that are more trail-specific users, and they've all expressed opposition to this project. What we all have in common is trying to preserve as much of the natural feel as possible of our open space. So I am concerned that this project has been elevated in importance through a means that is outside of the normal public input process. The TMP and the small area plans before it did a great job of soliciting input, and it seems that we would be much better served to start out one of the many unstarted projects in the TMP rather than doing one that wasn't called for. I do understand that the city is seeking to do the project at a lower-than-anticipated cost, but just because something is cheaper doesn't necessarily mean that it is worth doing. Also, because the proposal is being put out there in isolation, it isn't clear whether the intent is to ultimately pave the entire Coal Creek Trail all the way to Old Town. So what I'm doing tonight is advocating for as much gravel as possible to be retained on this stretch of trail. And I would hope that you're open to a public input process or potentially sending this item back to OSAB for a formal recommendation.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for listening.
Next up, we have Joshua Cooperman.
Hi, Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I had also planned to ask you to move consent agenda item 4E to the regular agenda, and I appreciate your doing that. I was next going to ask that you do not pave this segment of the Coal Creek Trail. And I oppose paving this segment for the following reasons, which are explained more fully in my letter to city council. First, concrete paving would run counter to the community's expressed desires. Second, concrete paving is not necessary for upkeep of this trail, at least this portion of the trail. Third, concrete paving would diminish the trail's recreational value. Fourth, bicycle commuters already have other options, which could be improved. I agree. Fifth, concrete paving is not necessary for road bicyclists. And finally, concrete paving would result in notable greenhouse gas emissions. If you are not willing to cancel plans for paving tonight, then I ask that you at least postpone a decision until you arrange for further public input. As part of this public input process, you should refer this paving project to the Open Space Advisory Board, as this board is tasked with providing advice on the city's trails. As I understand, this project was not referred to the Open Space Advisory Board, but that the board took it upon itself to unanimously recommend against paving this segment of the Coal Creek Trail. Finally, as a concerned citizen and as a member of another advisory board, I wish to note that the last, that two of the last three city council meeting packets have failed, at least initially, to fully include the recommendations of the Open Space Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have John Malansky.
Good evening, council. Good evening, citizens of Lewisville. My name is John Malansky. I live at 450 Fillmore Court in Lewisville. And for those that know me, I'm specifically making this comment as a public citizen and not as a member of the Lewisville Fire Protection District Board. I'm also against the paving of this segment of the Coal Creek Trail and that it be referred back to the Open Space Board. Strangely unscripted, I just came back from a short trip to Auckland, New Zealand, which is often touted as a place that people want to move to because of its outdoor opportunities. And they have a decided lack of available trail for people to run on there. The, it's interesting that for the one thing that it is people want to go there for, they don't have that. We are lucky to have that here in Lewisville. Finally, the city has, has made a point of trying to reduce our impact on the environment. This is certainly an impact on the environment, and it's an attraction that brings people here to Lewisville. I've been in town for 20 years. I've also been an avid runner, and it's something that I use regularly. And I know that a lot of people in the community who feel the same way, who couldn't make it here tonight, feel like that. So I'd simply ask that you refer it back to the Open Space Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Charles Danforth. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Me, yes.
Okay.
Danforth. I'm Charles Danforth, 327 West Sycamore. After that intro, there's not a lot I have to add, but I think I can amplify a little bit. I've lived in this city for 17 years. I'm a runner. I'm a cyclist. I would put my knowledge of the local trail system up against anyone in town. There's a lot, there are a lot of reasons not to pave the section of the Coal Creek Trail. I lay them out in a letter I sent to you earlier. Basically, there's no ecological reason. There's no, this is not a section of trail that's subject to flooding. Once we do this, it is irreparable. Cannot get it back. There are plenty of other paved routes in town. Cyclists don't necessarily want it. Runners don't necessarily want it. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm very confident in my opinions, but I'm mature enough to admit that maybe there's another side out there. From what I've seen so far, there seems to be a lot of anti-paving sentiment. Maybe there's another side out there that wants this paved for some reason. I've heard nothing about that. Let's have the process. If there is a compelling case for why we should spend $600,000 to $700,000 on this thing that is not in a transportation master plan, has not been approved by OSAB, has not seen the light of day besides page 50 in a routine paving memo, then let's have some sort of process. Let's have a public comment period besides an 11th hour attempt here in city council. That's all I have to do.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to the Zoom comments. Now, we have Kevin Lombardo.
Hi there, Kevin Lombardo, rebuilding at 947 Sunflower Street, living at 664 West Dollar Street. Tonight, I'd like to encourage council to reject the part of the concrete replacement project that involves a concrete connector on the Coal Creek Trail, many others. As a member of the local running community, I cannot express how important it is for us to have soft surfaces available on which to run. For a lot of us recreating on trails instead of concrete or asphalt, reinforces the feeling of being in nature. It improves our mental health and is softer and gentler on our bodies. Lewisville is a fantastic place for many reasons. And one of them is the preservation of open spaces and these types of soft surfaces, the preservation of nature, where we can run or bike beside our family and friends. Concrete is the polar opposite of that. Please don't turn more of the Coal Creek Trail into concrete. If it is an issue of maintenance, I will personally offer to help gather volunteers to repair and maintain parts of the trail. But at the very least, please be open to a public input process and the input of the Open Space Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers or on the Zoom call that's interested in making comments on this? All right, well, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. And I'd like to ask the indulgence of my colleagues that if I could start off with making comments, if everybody's okay with that? No? So I appreciate the comments. You know, public process is very important. You know, and I just want to address a few things that were said during this process. You know, one of the things, I've been on the council, this is, this is my eighth year being on council. So I was on council when we initiated the transportation master plan. I was one of the people that approved the transportation master plan. And when we approved that in 2019, what I said from this dius, of course, I was sitting where Maxine Most is sitting right now, is that this was a terrific body of work. It was absolutely necessary for the city to be able to move forward in addressing transportation, especially multimodal transportation. But I noted at the time, the one thing that was missing from the transportation master plan was a connection between the US 36 bikeways, specifically at the BRT stop in downtown. What we have today is a bikeway that leaves that and basically stops at the intersection of McCaslin and Dillon. And so I have asked staff since that period of time to come up with a solution to that. It's not an easy thing to fix. If it was easy to fix, staff would have come up with a solution, we would have done it. So that's been a gap for me in the transportation master plan. And moving ahead to 2020, when we started talking about doing underpasses in the city, and we had a ballot issue in 2021, which included an underpass under Dillon Road, and what the idea was is that that would allow for a connection that would get, get you all the way downtown using the power line trail and some other trails. Was that the best solution? I don't know. But that's, that's what was on the ballot. So I think it's important to note that council has been talking about, you know, these issues now for four years. So this isn't a new thing. If you go back to the public record, you can see my comments in 2019 in the transportation master plan. And every year, we've had discussions around this. And in fact, last summer, another time when we had our budget retreat, we discussed this very thing. The deputy city manager knows this because she's been around this whole period of time, you know, hearing me say these things. But it's not about one solution. It's really about how do we solve this issue if we really believe in multimodal? How do we go from the US 36 bikeway to downtown? Today, we don't have a solution. What you're objecting to would be a piece of a solution, but it wouldn't be a whole solution because getting across Dillon would still be an issue. So I have no problem saying that we drop bid alter number two because it's not a complete solution to the issue that we still have remaining. So that's where I am today. But I think it's important to note that if, you know, this wasn't buried somewhere in some document. This is something that council has brought up, and this is a council thing. It's not a staff issue. Staff was following the wishes, and thank you for doing that. But I have no problem pulling this one. I would like my colleagues to consider approving bid alter number one as part of this. So I am proposing that we approve the concrete replacement program for this year, including bid alter number one and dropping bid alter number two, which is the Coal Creek Trail. Other thoughts? Councilor Most.
A little more specificity from staff about exactly the different bid alternates. I'm fine with what you're saying because obviously it sounds like we need to have more conversation, and we need to engage the community in a solution to address our multimodal issues. I just want to make sure I'm clear on, on the other options. And so if it's possible, Director Cowherd, could you just give us a little, like, brief overview of the other pieces of this?
Sure. So bid alternate one is roundabout a Coal Creek lane that has fell into disrepair and is a responsibility of the city. It was something that we had put into the budget for next year. We bid it this year just to see what our pricing opportunities were. And our pricing is not as cheap as last year, but it's in line with previous years. And so we felt like we could move forward with that work sooner. Doesn't have a bottom line impact on your capital, or your capital improvement fund. That's bid alter one. Bid alternate two, we've clearly stated here is the Coal Creek Trail, concrete. Bid alternate three was a trail from St. Andrews Lane up to the intersection of 88th and Dillon. It was a segment that was identified as, I believe, MU, I'm sorry, I was going to say MU 32, but that might be Coal Creek.
16.
16, thank you.
Okay, now you guys are just showing off.
As part of the T, as part of the transportation master plan.
And is that currently a, is there a social trail there now, or?
Yes, there's currently a social trail there, and that was acknowledged in the transportation master plan. Catty corner to that intersection on this southwest corner of 88th and Dillon. There's also a heavy social trail, not noted in the transportation master plan, but we noted it as staff, had some conversation with our parks and open space department on that. And it was felt like if we were in that area doing work, that possibly we could also put concrete on this other social trail that really aligns with how the kids are walking to school in that area. So we just felt, in order to stay within our budgets, we were recommending alternates one and two. Certainly, council can guide us to do anything you want us to do that's on this bid schedule.
So, so just to be clear, three and four are really about kids getting to, getting to Monarch?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Anything else?
No, I just want to say I'm always in favor of making safe routes to school for our kids. So I would support those additions.
Okay, so are you saying you would include bid alter number three and number four?
Yeah. Because I think that's, you know, it sounds like it's reasonably priced, and I think it's a, certainly a reasonable investment. If our kids are going that way anyway, let's make it easier for them. Let's get that route cloud and improve their, you know, the experience and the safety. And maybe, you know, more parents will feel comfortable with their kids walking.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Dickinson?
Thanks.
I'm used to looking at you over here.
Yeah, right? What am I doing here? Three-dimensional. Can, can we bring up just the map of bid ultimate two? Are you able to, I mean, it's in our packet, obviously. But I don't, no, just so we, just so we can all kind of see the, the space, even if it's for future conversations. I'm incredibly patient.
While we're waiting, I'll just point out that it's really lovely the way Director Cowherd's shirt matches the color of the computer screen this evening.
Thank you.
It's the best I can do tonight. What does that mean?
It's the, it's the one up, up above.
Yep, right there. Okay. So I just want to make sure that I have my spaces correct. So obviously, 36 is the highway in the lower left corner.
Correct.
And then it's, oh, there's a.
Just checking your eye tracking right now.
Yeah, that's great. You're messing with me.
That's a memory exercise.
Oh, got you. Okay. We can, we can wait. All right, cool. All right. So you have the highway in the lower left, and that's concrete, everything to the sort of southwest is concrete, right? And then the green line is currently pay, or sorry, gravel. And then the crossing that you were talking about, Mayor Maloney, is kind of at the top of the curve there, right? Like if, I don't know.
So the, the green line goes up right there where she's pointing?
Yeah.
And if you go straight across, that's.
That's where the underpass was envisioned.
That's where the underpass envisioned, but that right, where she's pointing right, stop right there. That's the power line trail.
The dead ends there at, or into a sidewalk or just, okay. And so that's kind of what you're talking about, is trying to connect to that piece. And this road right now isn't going to. It's going to curve and go back towards the golf course. It's not going to cross Dillon. It's not going to connect to the, because it's paved on the other side of Dillon. And it's, right. And so like, it's paved to the south, and it's paved to the north, and this one little section isn't. But your point you were making was, we're not making the connection anyway. So now we're just going to have this paved section that takes you back to the golf course into the neighborhood there.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, you could follow that green line to the right. It takes you under Dillon, loops around, and you could actually get on the sidewalk and then follow Dillon to the west.
Comeback.
Get the power line trail.
Yep.
And that's what I'm sure many of you do, and it's what I do right now.
Yeah.
But a lot of people still cross Dillon where there's no Hawk Light or underpass or anything. So there's a safety issue there.
Okay. Sorry, where the power line trail ends in that point. Oh, God, I would never even try to do that.
Okay. Well, so I think, I think for future, we're not going to have a part of council, or we're not going to have a back and forth with the public tonight. So this is, I would just, as we move forward to have this conversation, I think my only confusion is, what I don't see is like a, a soft trail path that people are taking that, I guess my confusion is, this isn't a running trail in and of itself, right? We don't go back and forth on this. So you're running on pavement to get here, and then if you continue to run, you're running on pavement. If you're coming from Superior, you hit this patch of gravel, but then you're back onto pavement. Is that, so that, we can't have a back and forth, but that'll be the piece that'd be really helpful for me to understand, both from staff and from public, is how this is interconnected with further soft path. Because for me, it feels like a standalone section. So I think that would be really helpful. And then, and then, yeah, just, so again, a bigger conversation. And I don't think this would solve what people are talking about necessarily. Wouldn't solve everything, but you know, the option of dual paths, you know. And we have that in some places, and it's problematic in some ways, but. But like having a continuous pavement for bicycles and having a soft path for pedestrians and runners. But I don't pretend to solve that today, but these are just kind of... I just wanted to make sure we are all looking at the same piece. But I support your motion. Happy to vote for that. And Maxine, for your comments as well.
After the Mayor Protam, and then we'll come to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm agreeing with all these ideas to look into what the function of that portion of the trail is. Who uses it for what? And alternate ideas, I mean, can we, you know, have it paved, but also have a crusher fine or something next to it so that both people are happy runners and bikers? I mean, there's just so many options that we haven't got time to discuss tonight. So I'm in favor of looking at this and reassessing the situation.
Other comments? Counselor Most.
Just quickly riffing off what the Mayor Protam said. You know, one of the places I've been that has amazing trail capabilities is Bend, Oregon. And they, I mean, obviously we're not that big, but they have a system where they have this is for runners, this is for single track bikers, this is for horses, whatever. And I don't think we're going to get that complicated here. But it sounds like what I'm hearing from the community is we have two different problems to solve. One is how do we get our multimodal connectivity? We want people to bike. We're encouraging now, I think, really happy to encourage people to use e-bikes and e-scooters. And we want to have a safe way for people to navigate. And we clearly also need paths for runners. And so I think going forward as a community, we need to think about both of those things. And it's not the same path, right? And, you know, I talked to people about doing it next to each other. There were people who said that having the paths next to each other is an issue. So maybe we need to start rethinking how we navigate. And I just think that would be a great topic for the city to engage our staff and community with and really get creative and innovative about what that looks like. Maybe it's part of the comp plan over the next 10 years.
Thank you. Any last comments? Yes, Counselor Hamilton.
So as one of the representatives in Ward Three, I feel a deep sense of responsibility to make a comment on this. And I want to thank the residents for coming out and sharing their experiences on that trail. Like Counselor Most just mentioned, I know we have some goals related to multimodal transportation and reducing our reliance on fossil fuels, excuse me. As a runner and biker myself, I also appreciate crush gravel for a variety of reasons. I have a, I find it challenging to make a decision to pave a section of trail without better understanding the bigger picture of why that part is being paved. I do not believe that because something's bookend by concrete that it should be filled in with concrete. I think it needs to be a decision that considers what's the long-term goal of transportation and recreational use in that area. So I appreciate you pulling this off of the agenda so that we can discuss this further. And I'm looking forward to that discussion and learning more from the citizens and from staff about this topic. So thank you.
All right, let me rephrase the motion. And so we're making a motion to approve the award the contract for the 2023 concrete replacement program, including bids alternate one, three, and four, which excludes the Coal Creek Trail paving. Will we have a roll call vote, please?
A second?
Yeah, need a second. We got a second from Counselor Dickinson. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you very much who came and made comments. Next, we'll move on to item A of Regular Business Resolution Number 14, Series 2023, Resolution Approving Amendment to the Cornerstone Final Plan Unit Development Regarding Fence Regulations. Does anyone have any disclosures on this item? Thank you. We'll open public comment and start with a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor City Council, Lisa Ritchie, Planning Manager, City of Louisville staff. Tonight, you are here to consider the second of the PUD amendments that we have been processing on behalf of residents and neighborhoods affected by Marshall Fire. So tonight, we're here to talk about Cornerstone. Public notice was met per municipal code requirements. So, sorry, let me share. You can see the Cornerstone neighborhood is generally located at the north side of the McHaslin and Via Appia intersection. The PUD originally was approved in August of 1990. It included 71 single-family properties, all of which were destroyed during Marshall Fire. The current PUD regulates all fences within the neighborhood to some degree. As you all remember, in September, we passed ordinance 1838, the citywide exemption for the wood fences that connect to homes. And I want to be clear that this was a neighborhood-driven proposal. We collaborated for a long time with this neighborhood to come to a level of consensus that I believe they'll share with you, you know, that. But really, staff was here to kind of guide the process, provide some input. But really, this is a response to their decisions. So on the screen before you tonight is basically what is changing. So currently, the PUD requires six, some level of cedar fence with a dune gray stain on the interior of the neighborhood. We're removing that requirement, giving folks entire flexibility around what material of fences they choose to install. Just would have to comply with the municipal code, essentially four feet in the front yard, six feet in the rear. So along the Via Appia and McHaslin frontage, the current standard is it's six foot high in this section and then it's five foot high for the rest of it. But it's a cedar fence stained dune gray with vertical, sorry, a six-foot fence or a five-foot-high fence cedar stained dune gray. The neighborhood had some competing interests in this one here that we were really trying to reconcile. One was a sensitivity to budget, recognizing that wood is easy to source and these are rear property lines. Some felt like, you know, they had a risk tolerance that could handle having wood along the rear property lines. Other neighborhoods or other neighbors, on the other hand, felt really strongly that they wanted non-combustible fencing on every portion of their property. And so what we did here was the neighbors that wanted the non-combustible really coalesced around a specific fence design and they agreed upon the color themselves. And then the wood fence folks agreed to basically stain or paint their fence to match kind of the metal fence that the non-combustible folks prefer. So I know that's a little confusing, but essentially the code would now read, or excuse me, the PUD would now read that that fence, six foot high, solid vertical slats, and it would be the Sherwin-Williams 7645 or equivalent color. So there's consistency in color, height, solid design, but flexibility in actual material so that they can meet their preference on combustibility. So switching now over to the portion of the property that abuts fire station property and hillside open space. Currently, the PUD, it just says California Chain Link. It doesn't actually have a height limit. It just says California Chain Link fence. Those neighbors have coalesced on a 48-inch high. They would like either the black coated, powder-coated California Chain Link or other black open-style fence so that they end at 48 inches high. So they've coalesced on black design, maximum height of 48 inches. So those are the changes proposed. Happy to answer any questions. And with that, we're recommending approval. And I do know there's neighbors here tonight who would love to share their thoughts with you.
Okay, any technical questions for the planner? Okay.
Great.
Thank you. So we'll move on to public comments and I have a few cards here. The first one is Lisa Hughes.
Is this on?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lisa Hughes. I lived at 887 Larksburg Court before the fire, which backs up to the hillside open space. I'm here to recommend you pass the PUD. Myself, two other neighbors and everybody in the neighborhood, but especially the three of us, have been working with Lisa for about six months on this to coalesce our neighbors around some kind of fence option. And these are what we came up with. So we would recommend you approve it. What else was I going to say? I think that's it. The upstate shows obviously is giving us flexibility while keeping consistency in the different sections of the neighborhood, which we felt would be important for you all and also for us and just the look of the neighborhood, similar to what we had before, pre-fire. So I guess that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and working with city staff on this. Next up, we have Christian Dino.
Hi, my name's Christian Dino, 967 Eldorado Lane. So I'd just like to say we work together as a neighborhood, as well as with Lisa, to come up with what we thought was a good plan. I mean, this is representative neighbors working together of compromise. We've had a strong input that there was uniformity wanted. So, you know, with that desire, we found that uniformity with height, with color, with character of vertical striations in the design, while still allowing for that flexibility in fire resilience. You know, right now, the city is pushing for fire resilience within their building codes and encouraging people to, you know, adopt these measures and recommendations coming from staff on how to do this. This is one step towards that. I mean, we're really thinking about how we safeguard the properties we're rebuilding here. And this becomes part of that. There's, with the non-combustible fence, there's a need of maintenance, you know, with the powder coating, that these will look nice for a longer period of time, not the weathered cedar that's falling apart and ready to tip over at any moment. There are a number of us in the community that, you know, we have kids, we have pets. And while we're preparing to move back into these houses, we need swift decision because we need to be able to order these fences and have them installed before we move in. You know, my family's pushing for the end of April and it's critical that I have a decision as soon as possible. With that, I'd like to thank all of you for your consideration in approving this measure. And I'd also like to thank Lisa for working with our neighborhood and coming up with what we feel is a good plan.
Thank you. Next up, we have Judy Kern.
Hi, good evening. Judy Kern, 955 Eldorado Lane. First, I wanted to thank Lisa because she worked tirelessly with all of us. And we did work tirelessly to come together. We have no HOA, and which is plus and minus. So it requires neighbors to work very well together. I think all of us should be impressed that the fire brought us together to do just that, especially on an exterior fencing. I know it'll affect other people in the community too as we're driving on Via Appia and McHaslin. So I think a lot of us were sensitive to how that would look from the road. Keeping in mind too, like, as you drive along, there are other communities that won't have the same fence as us, but we will. And since we're right at that corner where everybody kind of congregates and looks and goes, ooh, that's like the Louisville corner because it's right across from the police station, it'll look nice. And we just wanted everybody to have some flexibility. Like Christian was saying so well, there are several people that are already, or there is at least one family that's moved in. There are others who are coming close to moving home. So we'd love it if you could approve it tonight so that they can move forward. But most importantly is we didn't want everybody to be forced into a specific price point. That's becoming challenging enough as it is. So we just thought this was a perfect way to come together, decide on something that looked similar and could work for all of us. And quite honestly, even though I don't back to the chain link fence area, I do use the cut-throughs in the trails so I see them. And it's a great idea, I think, for the whole community. And I think all of us agree with the neighbors that back to the open space, that that would look prettier than what was there previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room have comments? All right, we'll move to the Zoom comments. Up first is Tanya S.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Oh, hi. I'm Tanya Sumaru from Cornerstone, 944 Larksburg Lane. I just want to call in to say thank you to Lisa Ritchie and all my neighbors that worked really hard on coming up with this consensus. Please, please pass the change, the PUD so the Dinos can build their fence, Jessica Carson can stain hers. And I think, I haven't heard anyone complain about this in the neighborhood. And I also want to say, since Christian Dino brought it up, we would love to have another conversation about fire hardening. A lot of people in Cornerstone are very concerned about it. And we're quite panicked about what might come in the future. So, you know, when you look at these fences go up and if you see a lot of them are metal, you know that this is on our mind. So be watch for that. Thank you. Please pass this.
Thank you. Next up is Frank Valdez.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the forum and thank you to the City Council for the opportunity to speak. I spent a good percentage of the balance of this meeting listening to people talk about whether or not we should pave pathways. But I come from the Cornerstone neighborhood, 904 Eldorado Lane, and we're going to have to pay for this fencing out of our own pockets. And it would be nice if the city would consider allocating monies toward that end to alleviate the costs for the people who have been impacted by the fire. Furthermore, we would like to also consider a fire protection program that would protect the entire city of Louisville, not just Cornerstone, so that we could live safely in this neighborhood. And with that said, I'd like to yield the floor.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm not getting the list. Suzanne McGee.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just, I had to kind of add on to what Frank just said in a moment. I spent the first part of this listening about talking about spending all this enormous amount of money to pave pathways that have been suiting our community very well in the past. I would also just like to kind of add on that we would love to see these kind of finances going towards helping those of us with fencing, sidewalks, driveways and things who have lost everything. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more public comment, we'll move on to Counsel... Counselor Lay.
Thanks. I guess a couple of things about this. One, thank you to staff. I don't think I could begin to thank Lisa Ritchie enough for the work that she's done and others on staff through thick and thin in the last year and several months. But I can't, I can also not say enough about the community process and the fact of you all in Cornerstone coming together and working so hard on this. I know this is not a simple thing. I'm sure all the conversations were not as ordered and neat and as tonight because that's the way public process works. But I am incredibly impressed and thankful that you did the heavy lifting of working through all this. You know, a lot of research, a lot of discussion. So both staff and those of you who are involved in that process, my hat's off. And I know... And I know, you know, we've got a lot of people who, you know, have had to do that along with everything else that they're trying to do to try to get back in. I want to, I'm inclined, because I think the I'm just looking here, you know, and looking at the factors that, the PUD criteria analysis, it strikes me that in good shape on that and those, you know, I find that those factors are met. And I'm not particularly concerned about that, except that that's at bottom what we have to decide tonight. The only other thing I would say, just as a comment, because it's not strictly speaking part of tonight's process, but I think every time we get a chance, it's worth saying that fire, you know, that fire hardening and resilience is absolutely a huge issue. And it's something that we need to be focusing our attention on. You're not forgotten out there on this. We're just getting going. And, you know, I think the comment that a number of people have raised about the rest of the city, we've got work elsewhere in the city to do on fire hardening. This is not an isolated, I mean, that's one of the things I'm thinking about. Every time I look at the fencing around town, it just, it makes me nervous. But that's another day. I just want to make sure that it's not, you know, what you've said isn't forgotten, because there's a lot of work being done on that issue in different parts. And I really appreciate all of what you have done and brought to us. This is not the first time neighborhoods have worked together. Even in the last few weeks that we've had presentations. And it's just, it's terrific. So thank you very much for all that hard, hard work.
Councilor Most.
I have a question, probably for Lisa. The fence standards for, let me see if I have it on the right. The fence standards for the homes that back up to Arapaho, right? So this is something that's always confused me about fences, because I don't know if I own the fence or my neighbors own the fence, right? So in those cases where that fence is between the properties in this neighborhood and then the properties in the next neighborhood, has that been dealt with at all? Are we anticipating any issues? Or is there any kind of same process going on with those homes on the Arapaho area? So that we, again, I don't know who ends up owning the fence, right? So this is a question I always have anyway.
Yeah, for some reason, my slide is not going up there. And I'm not sure why. But so you were talking about the northernmost border of the neighborhood. So we are also, you know, Centennial Aid is kind of working through this conversation in a little bit of a different path. But their PUD does not regulate that northern boundary fence. Excuse me, it's their southern boundary fence.
Okay.
And now we're removing the requirement from this PUD to regulate that through the interior fence design standards. So that fence will be treated as any interior fence at this point as a result of this. There's no other regulations other than the municipal code for six-foot-high fence.
Okay, but they, so, but they have to build a fence against the back of their property? Or they don't have to build a fence?
No requirement that they build a fence.
Okay. Only if they build a fence.
They want to build a fence, they will only be subject to the municipal code.
So, so, right, so you could have neighbors on one side that don't want to build a fence, and neighbors on the other side that do, and that, I don't know.
That could happen in the interior of this neighborhood too. That could happen in any of these interior fence conversations. So it doesn't necessarily happen differently, because this is one subdivision against another.
So in those cases, then neighbors have to have those conversations, I suppose, if there's.
They do. So when someone comes in for a fence permit, we regulate it to be, we tell them it has to be located entirely within their property, you know, within their property. And so from time to time, we'll have neighbors who, you know, sometimes they'll split the cost, and that's great. Sometimes you'll see maybe one person wants this style of fence, and somebody else wants this style of fence, and there's nothing that says they can't do that.
Right.
So it's really kind of a conversation between property owners.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Mayor Protem Fahey.
Thank you. Yes, I've got a question for you also, Lisa.
Yes.
And first, I want to thank you for all the work also that you've been doing on this and all of the neighbors that have gotten together and just coalesced into this wonderful group that got something done. I'm impressed. My question is, is on the requirement for it to be wood, citywide. Is there any place in the city that currently requires the fence to be six-foot wood?
Yes. So first of all, I want to say with respect to the neighbors, what you saw tonight is what I saw the whole time. They were very respectful of one another. They listened to each other. They collaborated. And I thought the whole process was great. So what you saw tonight, I think, is representative of everything I saw the whole time. But to answer your question, yes. We have numerous PUDs throughout the entire city that require wood fences. And that's why we did that exemption code, you know, the exemption ordinance that basically exempts them from doing wood for the portion that abuts the house. But the wood requirement remains in place for numerous PUDs throughout the city.
Okay. And, but what about on city-owned fences? Is there areas where the city is required to do a wood six-foot fence?
I'm not aware, but of any requirement on city-owned land, but I didn't, I can't answer that definitively.
Okay. So I would really like to bring this back for discussion for the council at some other date to make this exemption for the requirement for it to, the fence to be wood to be applicable to all fences in the city. So that no PUD can require a six-foot wooden fence. But that's for another day. Thank you.
I assume the city manager made note of that.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Dickinson.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief. I just want to echo the positive sentiment. Lisa, thank you for your work. And I know it's a long process, and people pointed out that it isn't, it isn't simple. I mean, this is, it's hard to come to a collective decision about, about these kind of things. I don't want to assume votes, but could you imagine if after all this, council's like, no? Good work. But, but it really is a really, a nice moment where, you know, the city's yours, right? I mean, it's your community, it's your fence. And, you know, you're not asking for anything outrageous that's going to disrupt the sense of community in our, in our larger city. So I think it's, I think it's fantastic. And I think you guys did great work and super happy to support it. And like I said, try to keep it brief.
Thank you. Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you. I have some questions for you, Lisa. But first of all, thank you for facilitating that discussion and reaching consensus with the residents in that area. We had a similar discussion, I think it was on February 21st, regarding centennial heights. And I remember there was a specific point a resident made about along the power line trail wanting to adjust the height up to six feet, right, for pets and their safety. I'm assuming that discussion was had with this group, and the residents feel comfortable with their.
Four-foot height limit.
Four-foot high fence.
That was one of the questions we asked early on, is, you know, kind of where are, where do you want to land on height? And I would let Lisa Hughes, if there's a follow-up question, and confirm that. But my understanding is they're supportive of the height.
I'm the only one on those four, oh, sorry.
We just want to, need to make sure everybody can hear and.
I'm the only resident on those four houses that currently owns a pet.
We had essentially a four-foot fence before that was California Chain Link. And it kept in our pets fine. I lived there for 20 years. I had a pet for about 12 of those or more. So yes, we don't have a problem. I don't think anybody else is planning to get a pet, but even, I mean, a dog, basically. But even if they are, yeah, I mean, we haven't had a problem with any dogs jumping over the fences.
Okay, perfect. I just want to ensure that was considered for current residents and future residents who may move into that area or acquire a pet, and it sounds like it was. So I'm good. Thank you.
Any other comments or motions? Councilor Lay.
I move passage of Resolution Number 14, Series 2023, Resolution Approving Amendment to Cornerstone Final Plan Unit Development Regarding Fence Regulations.
Thank you. A second.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? I'm just, you know, I would just reiterate what all of my colleagues have said. Thank you to Lisa and the planning staff. Thank you to the community. It's really wonderful to see people come together and work together. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, 6-0. We will move on to Item B, Resolution Number 15, Series 2023, A Resolution Approving Amendment to the Coal Creek Ranch Filing III Final Plan Unit Development Regarding Fence Regulations. Are there any disclosures on this item? I see no disclosures. We'll open the public hearing. I'm sorry, but a staff presentation. Welcome back.
Hi all, Lisa Ritchie, Planning Manager. We are here now to talk about Coal Creek Ranch Filing III. Public notice was met per municipal code requirements. Coal Creek Ranch Filing III is located in the southern portion of the city, near the city's golf course. The PUD was first approved in February of 1990, including 140 single-family homes, 139 of which were destroyed during a Marshall fire. Again, as we've seen, current PUD regulates all fences within the neighborhood to some degree. And we've talked about the fact that the city no longer requires wood fences next to homes. This neighborhood's a little different. This is the first neighborhood that you will consider that has an active HOA. So I want to be clear that most of the survey work, most of the development of the different options were handled at the HOA level. And then I kind of came in about halfway through and kind of started guiding them into the finish line. So that's kind of where we are at this point tonight. I also want to be clear that, well, I'll talk about it here. Let's start with this. So this is really kind of the segments of the neighborhood fencing that has changed. Similar to the others, I don't have it noted on this slide, but we are removing from the PUD all interior fence design standards. The HOA is still having conversations. They regulate those fence designs through their design covenants. They may continue to do so. We, as the city, have just removed ourselves from that regulation. So they can regulate that at the HOA. From my perspective, there was not a city interest similar to all the other ones that we've removed. So we're removing that from the PUD. Along 88th and Dillon, which is this hash mark here, at this time, this standard is not changing. It currently requires a six-foot-high cedar fence. Early survey results shortly after the fire from the neighbors indicated pretty strong support to keep that fire, keep that requirement in place. However, I think as community has started to learn more about other fence options, combustibility and things like that, that sentiment is changing. However, the conversation's still happening at the HOA level. So I just want to be clear. I think for the rest of the neighborhood, we decided we really got to get this thing in place. People are wanting to move home. That's not changing now, not to say it might not in the future. So just want to be clear with that. Around the golf course, you'll see this dot. So this is basically all of the residential properties that abut this Coal Creek Golf Course. The previous standard was a wood kind of three-rail fence that was painted. They are changing to a black metal fence. And I have details for both of these fences on the next slide. So they are coalesced around that design. The PUD requires this fence to be six-foot-high cedar. We're removing that standard. This fence is not highly visible from any public rights of way. And it just gives those property owners the same flexibility to install non-combustible, open, solid, kind of whatever fence they want. The two details before you are kind of the remaining fence design standards. So on the left here is the 48-inch-high black metal fence, again, kind of an open-style fence. And then this is taken from the current PUD that's in place today, which is a six-foot-high cedar fence. Regulates the color. It's what you've seen out there for years. Essentially, for now, that stays in place. With that, recommending approval of this resolution and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the planner in the presentation? All right, yes, Mayor Protem Fahey.
I have one on, the same question for the, from the previous neighborhood. Does the city require that six-foot fence along Dillon, or does the beauty, or I'm in the HOA?
Both right now. The PUD requires it. And the direction that the HOA has landed on is, for now, they're leaving it in place, but they're going to continue that conversation with, more specifically with those property owners to understand. It seems like the needle's moving on that one within that neighborhood there on going in another direction. But we needed to get the rest of it taken care of. But yes, it's a city-PUD requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Planner Ritchie? Okay, we will move on to public comments. And I have one sign-up card, Jerome Quay.
Good evening. Jerome Quay, I used to live at 9. Excuse me. Jerome Quay, and we lived at 972 St. Andrews Lane, Lot 124, this fire. In general, I agree, you know, I think Lisa Ritchie described the sentiment is, we need to do something. So in general, I'm in favor of moving the requirements for interior fences. The golf course adjacent people have agreed on a fence. That's fine. But I have a certain amount of trepidation to be required to build a cedar fence on the back of my properties since I backed up 88th and Dillon. So I'm not sure what the, what the right answer is. But I'd like to, whether we approve this, knowing that maybe another revision down the pipe very quickly, or whether we approve that requirement from the union and the city requirements. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers like to make comment on this item? Okay. And I see no one on Zoom that has their hand up either. Going once, going twice. All right, we will bring it back to council questions and comments. Councilor Dickinson.
Yeah, so I just want to understand that comment. And I think what, you know, Deb was talking about is just, so right, right now, if someone wants to put a fence up along that stretch around Dillon, they're going to have to do a cedar fence currently.
Correct.
And they, as a community, are still having this conversation. It's not like the city is making a statement of, we want you to keep that cedar fence. That's not how they feel, and that's not how we feel. It's just staying the law of the land right now while they continue their conversation.
That's not the message that I've communicated during this process. I think the HOA is kind of going through, I don't want to speak for them. And I think at some point, one of them might be coming in. I think they were going to be a little late. But they are, I think, just kind of revisiting that conversation with the residents. City council, we could consider another design standard. The challenge with that's going to be is that the HOA covenants also require that wood fence today. So even if we adopt a different standard, we're going, we have given the residents kind of another headache to deal with, which is conflicting covenants relative to a PUD standard. I have indicated to the HOA and those residents, I'm more than happy to continue working with them, come back to you all, and get this corrected when they feel like they have consensus. In the meantime, though, this would, it would stay the requirement.
So I guess I would just ask, is there any need for us to say anything in this ordinance that sort of states a desire to, like, if the HOA changes their covenants, that we would like to revisit? Like, do you, do you need that from us, or is that totally unnecessary?
It's not before you tonight as an active application, so you probably really can't give me clear direction. But I think the sentiment that you all have expressed, you know, around the approval and neighborhood-driven decision-making could lend some comfort, I would imagine, in practical terms.
I'm fine.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilor Lay.
I made the mistake of going on Google. I made the mistake of going on Google Earth. For an earlier discussion.
And now he's lost.
Oh, no.
Can I stop you a second?
Yeah.
If you're looking at something that the rest of us aren't looking at.
Shouldn't.
We need to, we need to have the same body of evidence.
That's true. No, and I, that's a very good point. It's a very good point. I'm not, let's put it this way, I'm not using it to make the decision. It's backdrop.
I just want to ask the city attorney, do we need to bring that up now?
Sure, thank you. That would be a good idea, and I think I saw Planner Ritchie going to do that. It is important that the city council all have the same evidence that they're referring to, even if...
Can I bring my computer in and just?
Yeah, we can click share.
Quickly.
We do a click share, probably?
Oh, I shouldn't have said anything, and I shouldn't have looked at it.
Just give it to her.
Now I feel like I feel like a bit of a heel. I'm sorry.
Open government rules are open government rules.
I appreciate all of your attention, and I want to apologize to the...
You're one of the attorneys on this council. Maybe we should always have Google Earth.
No, no.
If not, I can pull up what you're looking at, or you can drag this computer down. It's not giving me permission to access this.
I really would like to go away right now.
This is cool.
No.
Connected to that thing. That was cool.
It's not working. What address are you looking at?
I was just looking from the top at the subdivision from a...
From Google Earth, yeah.
From about a thousand feet up, just looking at it. That's all.
Inquiring minds.
Sorry.
I'm just on Google Maps, and I'm going to zoom in to the Coal Creek Ranch Filing Three neighborhood. How about like this? Why is it not sharing?
In the meantime, there's one...
I'm fond of...
There's anyway, it's not... Okay.
I'm fond of something called demotivation posters, if you've ever seen those. I hope mentioning that won't get me in trouble, but there's one of a ship, a ship that is sinking, and it says, maybe your life is just supposed to serve as a warning for others. I don't want to get too deep on that, but sometimes actions can be just serving as a warning to others. So I'm, it's a teachable moment.
We all fall into those holes.
Yeah. No, we don't all fall into those holes.
Is that, so that's not your computer? So I have a question for the city attorney. Can we just move beyond this and not use anything that was mentioned as evidence?
Yes, and I would ask Councilmember Lay to keep that in mind when making his decision, that, you know, evidence that is available to all the city council should be the basis of everyone's vote.
So can you make your comments without regard to any evidence? It's just opinion?
I'm simply going to withdraw my comments. Just pretend what I said didn't...
But obviously, you had a...
The only comment that I was, I'll make one comment, which is just very general. I would encourage the conversation that you're saying that is going on, and whatever we can do to encourage that, I think is a good thing. It is separate and apart. I think the, I think that the criteria that are established for the decision are met, and that's the last comment that I'm going to make until my vote.
So I'm going to take the opportunity to make a comment on this. So, you know, I think that we need to help the residents move forward, and I appreciate the public comment that there's still issues that are potentially being discussed at the HOA, but I think we need to move forward with what's before us. So for those people who are along the golf course, which is quite a few people, that, and I know many of those are, those homes are under construction, and they plan to be in those homes this summer and this fall, that I'm going to be in support of moving ahead with this, and if we have something coming later, then we'll address it then, but I don't think we want to be in the way of anything. So are there any motions?
I'd make a motion. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yes, I will move to approve Resolution Number Fifteen Series 2023, A Resolution Approving Amendment to the Coal Creek Ranch Filing Three Final Plan Unit Development Regarding Fence Regulations.
Second.
Any comments on the motion? Okay, let's close the public hearing. Take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item C, Second Platte of the Enclave, 1214, 1216, 1220, 1222, 1224, West Pine Court. So we have an ordinance and a resolution, and we will be handling both of these at the same time. Ordinance Number 1849 Series 2023, An Ordinance Approving the Vacation of Four Drainage Easements Located Between Lots 13 and 14, Lots 14 and 15, Lots 15 and 16, and Lots 16 and 17 of Block One Dedicated by the Replatte of Enclave. And also Resolution Number 16 Series 2023, A Resolution Approving Minor Subdivision to Replatte Lots 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 of the replat to the enclave to create four lots and adjust the lot lines of the same lots within the subdivision, which is 1214, 1216, 1220, 1222, and 1224, West Pine Court. With that, welcome. Do we have any disclosures here? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and ask for presentation.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for the time and attention tonight. I'm Elizabeth K. Marquetti, Senior Planner with the city. Also here this evening is the applicant, Mr. Thomas Yarnell. He's available for questions after my presentation. The item before you is our rather ordinances 1849 and Resolution 16. They would approve a minor subdivision at 1214, 1216, 1220, 1222, and 1224, West Pine Court, along with a related subdivision agreement and the vacation of side lot line easements that correspond with the replat. The replat area is approximately 2.43 acres and is zoned PCZD residential. The site was originally subdivided via the Enclave final plat in 1986. It's now subject to the 1988 replat of the enclave. There are three families requesting this replat, the Yarnells, the Neslands, and the Bowens. Two of the lots have been vacant since they were originally platted in 1988. The Neslands purchased Lot 13 in 1995, and during construction, it was discovered that the foundation was incorrectly poured and wouldn't be able to meet side lot line setback requirements. To fix the zoning nonconformity, a small portion of Lot 14 was deeded over to Lot 13, but a replat was never applied for or approved by the city. The application tonight has been revised since the planning commission hearing to address that one condition during that hearing. The revised plat shown here only adjusts the lot line between Lots 16 and 17 rather than trying to combine the two lots. Lots 14 and 15 are being combined into the new Lot 14A, and the lot lines between all lots are being adjusted slightly. The newly named Lot 16A will now comply with the maximum lot size standards of the Enclave PUD, where it has slightly exceeded the limit since it was replatted in 1988. The applicant isn't requesting any modifications of the subdivision regulations, and a subdivision agreement is being proposed to ensure the completion of the work to abandon the water and sewer lines that were to serve the old Lot 15. The concurrent easement vacation will remove the originally dedicated drainage easements on both sides of the old lot lines. To be clear, the proposed replat will reestablish all side lot line drainage easements to correspond with the adjusted lot lines. Staff finds that the replat conforms with the requirements of Title 16 of the Louisville Municipal Code and with a comprehensive plan by enabling residential development and redevelopment in an area of the city intended for such a use. The replat complies with the Enclave PUD by ensuring the subject lots comply with lot size requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Ordinance 1849 and Resolution 16 to allow the second replat of the enclave, the associated subdivision agreement, and the vacation of the old side lot line drainage easements. Thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilors, do you have any questions? Counselor Most?
So many questions tonight. So just, so I'm clear on this.
Yeah.
Lot, the configuration we're seeing right here, right, we basically are taking what was originally one, two, three, four, five lots and turning them into four lots.
Correct.
And the minor adjustments along the, along the lot lines are based on aligning what actually exists with drainage now? I'm just trying to understand what... We're moving the lot lines, so what, and what's, what's the reason again? Because the existing drainage isn't necessary, or because, I'm just trying to understand again. I just didn't sink in, so if you can...
Sure, no problem.
Speak to me again like I'm 10 years old, because I just don't understand it.
The little replats are never easy.
Right.
So the applicants are hoping to adjust the lot lines to bring the lots into compliance with the PUD, which has established maximum lot size requirements. So the old Lot 16, for some reason, was always larger than it should have been.
Should have been, okay.
And so when a lot line is adjusted, the standard practice is to vacate the old drainage easements. Drainage easements historically track right alongside a lot line on both sides.
And what, and those are for literally water drainage only?
Only water.
Not for any utilities or anything like that?
In this case, no.
Okay.
In this case, the sole purpose is to convey stormwater, so nobody's property floods, nobody accidentally floods their neighbor's property.
Okay, perfect, all right.
We want to maintain that condition, ensure that this new configuration is also safe and protecting of people and property.
Okay, so that's for 17A and for 16A now, and what's happening with what, 14 and 15? They're being...
Same.
But they're, but it's being combined. There were two lots there originally that are now combined.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so now the only other question I have is, what are the tax implications to the city of taking two lots and making them one lot?
There really aren't any.
I would just add, I don't think we know what the tax implications are. That's not part of staff's evaluation in this case.
Okay.
So we didn't really look at that.
Okay, those are my questions.
Yes, Counselor Hamilton?
A question following Maxi, or Councilmember Most's. These lots, what is it, 17A and 16A, back up to open space, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Would these drainage easement changes, to the best of your ability and knowledge, impact in any way the open space drainage?
Not to our knowledge, and if and when the applicants come forward, or future applicants come forward with a building permit request for the city to actually construct something, the drainage patterns will be reviewed by planning staff and building department staff at that, at that time, to ensure that that's not, never going to be the final outcome.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to confirm also that there is, there is an underground drainage from the Mesa to Enclave Park for rainfall, whatever, snow melt, that goes under these lots and comes out at the park. Is that right? Or is it to the south, under the Hillside neighborhood, or the Neodada place, the ditch? Not the ditch, the tunnel?
Yeah, I don't know. We'd have to look that up. We really didn't look at the drainage plan. I mean, I think that, I would just say, this is going to mimic the, so there is a master drainage plan approved for this subdivision, you know, from a couple decades ago. We really didn't look at how that all operated, because, you know, we're expecting that, well, we know that when they redevelop, they will have to comply with that master drainage plan, which means for these lots that they'll have to drain in the correct direction, go into the correct storm sewers, and drain in, you know, to the, in the correct way, and we will evaluate that. So these easements are really just to give us space for them to drain along those lines until they get into the storm sewer, but I don't know the answer to that larger drainage question. We can look it up if you think it might be relevant to, you know, the proposal to adjust the lot lines. We can get that information for you.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to confirm that this reconfiguration won't impact
Yeah.
the drainage from the Mesa to the park.
Yeah, from staff's point of view, we do not, we don't see any issues that this would impact existing, the existing master drainage plan or the existing infrastructure. We think it'll fit in with everything that's been established for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Does the applicant have a presentation, or?
No, but he's happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Or you just have comments?
I have another question.
Okay, well, you have another question?
I don't know who it's for. So when Lot 14 and Lot 15 are combined into 14A, right? That's still within the maximum lot size that is appropriate for this development?
Correct.
And what does that do to the maximum house size on that lot? Just... Does it change?
It does not change. It does not change.
Thank you. I think we'll go to the first round of public comments. Is there anyone who has any public comments? Okay, well, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for questions, discussion. There will be a second round of public comments. Any additional discussion? Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. I would like to ask a question of the applicant. Can I do that right now?
Sure.
Okay.
You can, you can typically do that until we close the public comment.
Okay.
We close the public hearing.
Perfect. So what we've seen with fences and other applications that affect a neighborhood is engagement of the individuals in that neighborhood in the decision-making process. I, of course, saw the emails that were submitted to council, but I would like to hear from you how you engaged your neighbors in this decision-making process.
So we are in the process of working with Lisa to determine what the fences should be in our neighborhood, and we'll be bringing that to council once we've figured it all out.
Oh, I guess I should clarify. Not necessarily fences, but changes to the property lines, maintaining 16A, that sort of thing. Just brief few bullet points of how you communicated that or got input from your neighbors who would be impacted by this decision.
Certainly, all the people in the neighborhood have known about this. We've had discussions with them. Prior to the planning commission, there were lots of people who wrote in in support of our efforts. We've enjoyed this view from the cul-de-sac to the mountains and the flatirons, and part of what we're doing and have, are preparing to do is maintain that view by not having houses developed on those top two lots. That's changed slightly because when we first started, we were on 14, and we're preventing 15 from being built on. Since the fire, and since we own 15, we're combining 14 and 15, and we'll move our house a little bit onto 15 to help for, for fire protection, because our house basically set the house next door to us on fire because of the winds and the fire. So we'd like to slide our house over to get better... slide our house over to get better fire protection. 16, the Bowens have no plans of building on that at all, right? They had originally requested consolidation, but that lot size was bigger than staff was comfortable with, so they are now not requiring or requesting consolidation, but they have no plans to build on that lot, maintain it free for views for themselves and the neighbors.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Seeing, well, let's go to the second round of public comments. Public's making this one really easy. All right, that's the second round of public comment. So now we'll have the council discussion, and if you want to make any motions or anything. Mayor Protem Fahey?
Thank you, mayor. I would just like to make one comment, that there was a lot of outreach to the other enclave residents, or former enclave residents, myself being one of them. So we did do public, this, the lots were purchased before the fire, but all of this has taken place since the fire. I am 100% in favor of this. It's going to really impact the neighborhood, but it's going to impact, I think, the rest of the city as well. There's going to be less untended, open vacant land, which I think is a plus. And so I will move to approve Ordinance Number 1849, Series 2023, an ordinance approving the vacation of four drainage easements located between lots 13 and 14, lots 14 and 15, lots 15 and 16, and lots 16 and 17 of Block 1 dedicated by the replat of the enclave on second reading.
Second.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. You can still make comments.
Okay.
Any comments on the motion? Seeing none, can we take a roll call on the ordinance?
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. 6-0 vote. Thank you very much.
I would move that we, can you, okay?
Yes, Councilor Dickinson.
I move that we pass Resolution Number 16, Series 2023, is a resolution approving a minor subdivision to replat lots 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 of the replat of the enclave to create four lots and adjust lot lines between the same lots with subdivision agreement.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? City clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey?
Yes.
Thank you. That wraps up regular business, and then we'll go on to the city attorney's report.
Thank you. I have no report, mayor.
Thank you. Council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. Going once, going twice. All right, thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.